That's scary. Okay. Isn't that new? You've got to work all that before. So now we've got to go and continue. I'll have to continue on the. Lauren, could you?
I do have to. You want to also hit the screen with all of us on it? Don't put your funny water bottle on.
I won't. Like that. It is.
Oh, I can't. I think um. Gender control is not.
So they asked me also if I wanted to continue.
Interesting. So I guess. What's the wire, you know? I didn't come around this way. Where's our people? Oh. I am so sorry. I apologize. Sorry. And you know, it must have scared my mind and my grandchildren. I now have two granddaughters living with me and a dog.
Yeah.
And uh.
No excuse.
And they're going Thai food tonight. So my husband is down taking them out to supper in charge and for Thai. I am, oh, next time, please.
Start moving. We'll be back.
Yeah. Back in August. You know, you please if you call me and remind me next month that I will bring family and peace.
Sure, if we don't meet next month.
Oh, that's right, we don't. But September five, we can do it all. August.
Yeah, it's a long, long time, so maybe September.
I am so sorry. Oh, I didn't say everything. Yeah, I was. Oh.
That was really good.
Okay, are we ready to, are we ready to start?
We're having a long day.
Yes. All right. So it is, let's see, I think it is six oh five and we'll call to order our regular meeting on June first, 2021. First on our agenda is public comments. The North Carolina Education welcomes public comment. We love to hear from anyone who would like to address us. A couple of notes, we ask that all public comment be limited to five minutes or less. And we also want the public to know that it is our policy that we not directly address public comments at the, at the time it is given, but that we will follow up with any comments after the, at the meeting. If that's what it is. Um, we have one member of the public with us. Would, would our member of the public like to speak? You may unmute yourself if you would like. No. Okay. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May fourth.
And we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May fourth.
I'll second that motion. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, those opposed? Does anyone have sent? I have sent. Thank you.
Everything, everything.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to correspondence. Um, I kind of wanted to show that school.
Thank you. I know, I didn't even like that. I said.
Um, so I don't know if you remember, but a few months ago, we had uh, somebody was, I guess, was married to brought us this cool um, little promotional piece that is a mailer that you can uh, put a digital message inside of. And. If you guys can read it. So I will pass this around, we can look at it later, you're going to hear the whole message now, but this is a very nifty mailer.
You know, it would be inexpensive to put those together and, and have those, you know, sent out with messages or, you know, whatever. I, I thought it was a really.
Yeah. Then how much did, did they pay? How much does this cost?
No, but this lady keeps calling me, she wants to meet with me, she wants to talk with me, and I just haven't had a moment to do that. But I thought if this was something you would like to pursue, um, I can get some.
Why don't we try to? I have to say, I love that they took our. Okay. And they even took the woman the pencil.
It's a very. I appreciate her.
That was very cool, clever thing. Yeah, um, I was, I'm a little bit interested, I would say not, don't send a huge amount, I'm not sure it's going to be. I, I'm thinking if they're coming after you by the customizing their pieces, that's not that inexpensive.
Well, let's find out. Well, I have all this rescue money and Esther one, two, three money and that, like they keep sending us. Maybe we could.
Maybe we'll.
Communication.
I'm, I'm also, I'm mostly interested to know how, like, are you able to change the message when, like, you reuse the mailers? I'm very interested to know that and um, yeah, that's good, that's really cool.
It's really different times of the year. Yeah. Semesters is so hard out there, so if I don't get it back, I have to.
It's like one of those birthday cards, I keep saying, saying. That's really good. Um, okay, great. Um, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so um. One of the things that we um, are in the process of doing now is closing off the end of the year account. And Kathy took the transfers into the packet, any questions about that? So we are required to, you know, provide the town with any um, information about transfers that go out of the domains. And I don't believe we did that, Kathy. So when we balanced up. It should be, why don't I just look at it? Um, so again, if you've got any questions about where money came from Peter to pay Paul. Um, there are some notes there, but if you've got any questions about that. And then we know that there'll be a few more areas that we have to make those changes. And if at this meeting that the board votes to give me permission to work with Kathy to do that, because we will not meet before June 30th, because everything has to be closed.
But so this is just about getting our budget to balance out.
Right, and we've done as much as we could to this point, but there will still be some odds and ends that have to be moved around. I think we are incredibly fortunate that given the year, the unexpected and that we had, that are, we were able to handle things within the budget and, and cover costs without going back to the town and asking for more money. And it appears that we will actually have um, a few dollars left over to donate back to the town's more far. Um, there are a couple of things that we probably will need to get that aren't in next year's budget with some of that money, but we will certainly report on that in our August meeting. Um, and we have been very responsible in terms of spending that money down. And anything that's really not necessary that is left over in the budget, as we always do, goes back to the towns. I mean. It's nice that they have the um, ability now to put some of that money. And I think they voted for plus one percent this past time into a capital improvement fund, so it will come back to us at some point. But. Do we want to take that vote now or do we want to wait until the end of the?
I think we should do the vote now. Does anyone have any questions about, about this and what this means or, you know, what the impact is here? Okay, would someone like to make a motion that we approve these uh, transfers?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfers since.
Uh, seconded. Okay, we have a, a motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Okay, motion carries.
And then, and we need the vote to authorize superintendent to do one unit. The language.
Yes, um, so um. Since the board doesn't meet in July, uh, we'll need to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to transfer line items as needed to balance the budget by June 30th. Um, so if someone would like to make that motion, it's a motion we make every year to, you know, close out the accounts.
I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to make any necessary.
Transfers.
Transfers.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
I think they're good.
Okay, opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Lauren just made copies of a letter that we sent home to our families regarding multi-age and we have chipped it or not. It just went out. I would have put it in your package so that you're informed. Uh, we, we had discussion with the board, we had input from families and um. Hopefully you will see that discussion reflected here. I believe we have addressed many of the concerns without compromising the integrity of the multi-age program. But I'll give you a minute to, we've gathered already and ask any questions that you might have.
It seems very logical. But for a very big way.
Yeah, um, I, since I've already read this, Lauren, I'll just take this minute to um, I just wanted to say. I want to say thank you to Lauren and to Mary Beth, because I had a lot of questions about this. I had talked with a lot of parents um, who were, had concerns or just had input about how the multi-age has gone and had thoughts about how it would be changing things up for that last year. Um, and I really appreciate how responsive you were. And I, I feel like we came to conclusions that are really good ones, like uh. We're, we're sticking with, you know, our multi-age model makes sense. It makes sense for a lot of reasons. It makes sense for our, for our kind of circumstances of size, but it also makes sense for the kind of learning that we want to do, where we have these kind of open-ended learning paths and they're individualized for our students. Um, I, I think it also helps um, preparing for this, the transition to seventh grade. And I'm really happy that we'll be able to do these kinds of things while still keeping our special kind of cat's phone events and things for the sixth grade or something. This is a really good, good step, so thank you very much for that.
Well, thank you for the input. Thank you for all of the discussion. And certainly the fact that over the next year or two, there are going to be some additional changes in our, in our makeup. It, we, we didn't want to be any more, you know, disruptive to students and staff than necessary. So we felt that this is a really good, solid plan and at the same time uh, addresses some of the concerns and questions, if not all of them that, that folks had. So again, thank you for all of the, the inputs that helped us to come to that decision. It seems logical and comprehensive. Well, thank you, Kathy. And then the last thing I had to share with you, so we need to have another reopening plan. And um. We just got the guidance and templates yesterday. So I have done a draft plan. Our reopening committee will be meeting next Tuesday late in the afternoon to go over that draft and to make any changes that we need to um, prior to the June 23rd date that it is due. Well, it's not due to the state on the 23rd, but it has to be up on our website. And then a month or so following that, it has to be submitted to the state. And then um, I'm not thinking they will give us any feedback, but we'll continue to get guidance and mandates and requirements. And the plan will basically say that we will comply with any guidelines, CFP guidelines or any executive orders. But it will also reflect what we plan to do next year. So um, just kind of giving you a little bit of a preview. Masks are still going to be required during the school day inside for the foreseeable future. Um, we will continue to provide messaging and reminders about distance learning to the extent possible. Um, we are going to go back to our two ways in the cafeteria. And we can do that with at least three feet um, separation, which I think is, is adequate. Um, we will not be offering remote learning as an option to people. Um, in instances where it's special ed or medical or they're extenuating circumstances, there certainly will be remote learning in our future. But we will not be required to offer it as, just because I would like to have remote learning for parents. So that has been taken out. Um, a lot of the excessive language about deep cleaning and protocols for school sanitization has been taken off the books. And so that's not in our plan. It went from a rather large plan to, I think, maybe a five-page plan. It's easy to read, it'll be up on the website once it is finalized by the reopening committee. Uh, I think we were uh, very fortunate in having a successful year having in school. And we'll continue to do what we've done in terms of protocols for people who are, you know, not feeling well, doing self-assessments. We will remind families about that. Most of our staff has been vaccinated. Uh, we've been reaching out to parents of students who are 12 now or will be 12 um, to let them know about clinics if they would like to take advantage of those vaccinations. Uh, and meanwhile, we will continue, like I said, to practice every safety measure to keep us open. Um. In terms of the details of all of this, as soon as the plan is finalized by the reopening committee, I will get it out to the board members prior to it going up on our website. And if you've got any questions. You know where to find me.
What about snow days?
Well, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the snow days. And by and large, our families like snow days. They really like their snow days. Um, we have not yet gotten the guidance from the state that tells us what we can and cannot do around weather. But we are hoping as a region that we'll be able to do what we did this year, to put it out there to say, the first five snow days will be snow days. If it looks like we're going to have a horrific, you know, winter and we're going to have day after day, we would then, you know, have the um, prerogative to say, moving forward, we are going to go remote. One of the difficulties with, the challenges is that this passion, you know, we made it a practice that every day kids took their device home with them. So if there was a snow day tomorrow, you know, they've got them, or if we had to shut down. If we are not going to be anticipating remote learning on any regular basis, it seems to be a lot to ask kids to take their device home and bring it back. Unless there's a specific reason to do that, whether it's a homework or a project thing, it's always an option. But to make that part of our daily practice seems a little bit silly. So the, the challenge comes in is that kids go home and we have a snow day. All right, so the first day is probably the transition day. We wouldn't just jump into it unless we had a lot of advanced warning. So then. How do we move forward with remote learning when the devices are here? And the kids would then have to find a way to come in and get them. So we've got to iron that out, how, you know, if, if we know we're going to have a really bad stretch of weather coming up, we can send them home. But we've, we've not gotten down to the, into the weeds with that yet.
I don't think sending the devices home with kids is detrimental at all, because my kids use them almost every day at home. Anyway. Yeah. I mean, they use them and then they bring them and they know they've got to bring them back to school, right? So I really, I mean, I, I wouldn't stop having them bring their devices home.
Neither.
I mean, unless a parent, unless there's a parent that really does not, like, a pre-kay or a kindergartner that doesn't want the iPad, if they limit that. But if my kids are going on iPad and doing Lexi or work or going on the phone book and writing, I have no problem with them bringing their devices home every single day.
That's really good to know.
And in my mind, it's the same as they have to bring a folder in school. Yeah. A binder in school, so they just have to bring a device, it's just another.
It's just, yeah.
And their snack, I mean, it's, they know exactly when to go in their backpack every day.
Well, that makes life a whole lot easier, because that was something we thought we were really going to have to grapple with, but that's great to know.
I think the chargers are the only issue. It's like, we have the hotel chargers, like designated and, you know, they can't be used for any other things.
Okay.
You know. But we've bought another set of chargers now in different places. I don't know. I mean, I'm sure Laura's coming to school a whole bunch of times about the charger. I think about the most of the time. But um, so that should, that's anecdotal for me, I maybe am the same way. Our, our kids are used to it now. And it's just, it's part of the practice.
Well, has it been damaged or anything to them or has it had any trouble with the long time? You know. I mean, I have one family that doesn't want their. Home. Other than that. It seems like it's. Yeah. Other than that, I think, like you said, people are used to it and.
Yeah, because it blocks bags, didn't make the whole year though. Because it's one bag.
Yeah, I have more.
I mean, I was shocked. I mean.
Anyone who needs to block this is back open up because.
They lasted a long time then for that iPad, but. Where's on hers? I don't know how, because like, oh, that guy's a mess, but that zip line bag.
Well, and after the initial, we, we got feedback about, oh, they're too heavy. And we actually got the weight things down and whatever the weight was, it wasn't the, the device in the backpacks. But so this would be something I would say to the board is, while we were grappling with it. This is something that can be board policy, board agreement. We don't need to take this out to the general public for votes or surveys. I would suggest we don't do that because we. So if, if this, the feeling of the board, and certainly we can, you know, poll the rest of the board members or someone can make a motion to say that we continue, we, you know, with the practice of bringing devices home in the event that we, you know, want to take advantage of remote learning for extended weather or whatnot, that, and they're there for the children to use in the evening or whatever.
I'd like to add that regular cases will still probably have the new season, they have to quarantine. And Lauren's Friday night emails, I don't know why it's always Friday.
Yeah.
You know, alerting us.
I love it.
Holidays and Fridays. You know, so I thought.
Always it's Christmas.
We just have to be, we just have to be prepared anyway, so.
I, I'm so glad to hear that. So I, I'm, I would love to, you know, have, would support that policy.
I think it's just a good practice in general, because, you know, I mean, it's just part of life, like that. That's just, that device is just how things go. And so like, let's say, you know, we do more and more curriculum-based stuff that we have on our devices instead of books or workbooks and things like that, that they're working through the devices. It's just, might as well have everybody on board.
Well, and they are, they're used to it, so it's not like it will be any. All right, well, one.
Great.
Here's one.
Motion. Why does it have to be?
It doesn't have to be going on, but I just want, you know, as long as I know that it's the will of the board, so that when I say to, to parents, this isn't me being a, a, you know.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we continue the policy of students.
Oh, wow.
You know, transporting their electronic devices to.
Second, wholeheartedly.
Right. There. Any discussion?
Could you just, according to the practice of, by we don't have.
Oh, okay.
Or the practice.
Yeah.
Yes, take them away in the summer. Kathy got that right. Thank you. I just think it just makes sense. You know, we've already built the habit.
Yeah.
Let's just keep it up. And if it leads them to, you know, not be on their video games, they can, and they can do Epic or they can do Lexi or they can do, you know. Think.
Does that explain those?
Do you have any assignment? That's. Absolutely. I just think it's a good, sensible, reasonable.
John does the 3D printing stuff?
Yeah.
Whatever that is, I mean, not to interrupt anybody. Great, I think it's fine.
May I ask a question? Of course. You said a couple of minutes ago about um. Staff having had their shots. Can you tell us what percentage of the staff? Without, I don't need names or, you know, just. Twenty percent, fifty percent, you know.
I would say seventy-five percent at least.
Mm-hmm. Is there a resistance to any of them taking the shots or is it just not being accessible?
We are not at liberty to ask any reason or to suggest. We just know based on, you know, who signed up for clinics and from what people have shared. We're allowed to ask people, have you been vaccinated or not? We're not allowed to pursue it. So I really couldn't tell you what, what you think. Reason people would have if they opted not to have.
Can employers, can, can employers like uh, require that they get vaccinated? You know, get vaccinated?
There's some mode, there's some.
Not, not in school. Not yet, but there's some movement to talk about, you know, it's okay to require, ultimately it would be okay to require students to be vaccinated, just like we require them to be vaccinated for other childhood diseases. Um, and there are some, some providers or not providers, I'm sorry, employers who are requiring their, their staff to get shots. But I don't know that we'll ever be able to apply that to teachers unless it becomes, you haven't had your T-DAP booster? You know, that sort of thing, but.
Yeah.
I can't imagine not wanting it. And I'm amazed that you have that kind of, um, listeners.
We have like seventy-five percent have.
Have.
Oh, okay.
Have.
Okay.
Yes.
Much better. I was thinking, wow.
No, no, no.
Oh, you were thinking have none?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, no, seventy-five percent have. Okay. That's a difference, too. I was just, yeah.
But, but we will have masks and so the masking will continue.
Masking will.
How about cohorting?
Continue. Um, we are going to allow the students to go into the special area, the music room, the art rooms, and not have specialists coming into classrooms. Um. I believe we can do some relaxing of the cohorts. Typically, I mean, for the most part, kids stay together anyway, or if they're, you know, if they're, we says they're with a little larger cohort. Um, I don't believe we're going to need to be as strict as we have been this year. We will continue the practice of keeping seating plans and documenting who's with who. So that if we need to do um, contact tracing, it'll make it easier. So if we know who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, where people are sitting, where, who's having contact and interaction with, you know, kids with kids and kids with adults, we'll be able to do that contact tracing. But I do not believe we have, well, I know we've had no transmission among kids in the building whatsoever this year. And I think well beyond hotel, there's really even the quarantining. I, I don't, I don't know of anyone who has said that quarantining kids for seven, fourteen days because they were close contact has resulted. We've not had anyone get sick. So I, I believe we're going to see some relaxation, but we have not gotten any guidance relative to isolation and quarantine requirements yet either. Um, right now, as of this morning, the travel bans, they're saying are still in effect of the staff travel requirements. If people have traveled and they're not fully vaccinated, then they need to quarantine. So we do have staff, some staff members. Um, but I believe if they haven't um, eliminated it altogether, they have limited the number of days. If a staff member who is not quarantined and travels and becomes uh, exposed and has to quarantine, we no longer have to pay them indefinitely to be out on their quarantine. There will be a limit of days that they can. Um, whether that will be an incentive for people either to get vaccinated or not travel, I do not know. But um, a lot of it's still the honor system. So I, I would not know, you know, if, if a non-vaccinated uh, staff member decided to, over the weekend or a holiday to travel to, to Buck Two and come back and resume work, I, I, you know, I wouldn't know that. So and, and the same with our families, you know, if we have, you know, parents traveling, going places, doing things. Most parents have been really good about letting us know what's going on. And we've been working with parents. So even though, I shouldn't say this on camera, but um, even though the, the letter of the law says, if, you know, kids travel and they come back and they haven't been vaccinated, they have to quarantine. There is no vaccination for most of our little peanuts. And if we know, after a conversation with a parent, that say, we have a family that's traveling to Rhode Island with their family unit, staying in a family home in Rhode Island and then coming back, and they've got no symptoms, we're letting them come back. We're not forcing a fourteen-day quarantine. Um, if we have a family that goes and visits relatives and all the adults and relatives there have been fully vaccinated and there's not other exposure and they don't have any symptoms and everyone appears to be healthy, we're allowing them to come back. So um, there is, while the legal people on the team are not coming out and saying, you can do this, they're saying, you know, there's room for professional judgment and having conversation and getting the whole picture, it makes a difference. So we have been taking advantage of that, um, which may result in some cases where this family says, well, you know, you made us quarantine and you didn't make them quarantine, there are now multiple factors to consider, it's not as cut and dry. And whenever a professional judgment is allowed to enter the picture, it becomes a little bit more complicated and dicey. But again, you know, we are committed to keeping our kids safe, to keeping school open and in person. And, you know, we will follow the trends. And if, you know, certain practices are leading to an unintended consequence, we will revisit it. In fact, there are now five required reporting and review revision dates over the next couple of years, where our plan has to be reviewed and or revised and re-submitted to the state. So, you know, it's going to be fluid for a while. And again, the guidance and the requirements are always lagging the, you know, the due dates for when we have to have plans and make decisions. So we're making the best decisions we can, but even with this plan, there will be the disclaimer that, you know, um, should we get different guidance or different, you know, executive orders or mandates, you know, we will, you know, reflect them in future revisions.
Okay. Um, before we move on to the, to our next report, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions about that? Um, it occurred to me that maybe I moved too quickly from the five, six um, multi-age piece. I just wanted to say out loud um, that the. that the, the plan for next year is that the multi-age setting will be used for reading and writing and possibly specials, um, but will be, uh, fifth and sixth grade or, let's see, grade specific instruction for homeroom kind of space, math, science, and social studies, I just wanted to, in case, because I kind of forced you to like speed read that while I was also speaking, I thought that wasn't the nicest thing to do, so I thought I'd say that out loud and see if anybody had any questions about that.
Okay, alright, um. Let's see, we have the reader bills.
Oh, and just, I'm, I'm sure you caught it in here, but tomorrow night there's going to be a parent meeting, a virtual meeting, that if anyone's interested in joining that, um, we can send them an invitation.
Oh yeah, let me know and I'll invite you if you, you know. Anne was invited, she's the parent of a, of a fifth grade, upcoming fifth grader, but if you would like to attend virtually, just let me know and I'll add you to the email list.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's move on to our principal. What time is it? Six o'clock, say something. It's virtual, so Lauren has to send a link.
Well, why don't we just send a link to everybody and then if you want to, last resort, then you'll have it.
Okay, and then I think we are, if no one has questions about the bills for review or the budget handouts, we'll move on to the principal's report.
So, we've been fortunate to have some of our end of the year traditions, um, be scheduled and occurring. We, uh, the Safe School Climate Committee planned for a virtual ruler parent presentation. We had, uh, four families attend, but it was great to do, uh, because we think next year when we have open house, we'll make it just a part of the open house, so it was nice to have, um, practice with it and, um, I think the feedback from families was very positive, so, um, that was a worthwhile event.
Speaking of ruler, this is a good segue to the gift portion of. So.
We don't get pizza, but we get a book.
So.
It's okay.
She's never gonna let, you're never gonna let her forget, are you?
No, I'm, I'm doing that for Gordon, yeah.
She'll ask me.
It's okay.
I'm really gonna have to make this interrupt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have, I thought so.
Very good company for us and I would.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. What was Anne's idea to do the book club, so I just figured we'd give you the books.
So, let's read this, you know, we don't have a meeting like next week, next month, so that would be a perfect time, um, you know, spend a little time and, um, with this book, I think it could really help to, uh, help us all to relate and to unlock the power of our emotions and help our kids, ourselves, and the society.
You only get this one if you didn't have a daughter.
True.
Yeah.
Well, we could probably arrange that.
Margaret, I'm sure would love to come and visit us.
While our sixth graders couldn't visit Northwestern for the, um, informational session, the principal and, uh, school counselor came to talk to our sixth graders about their upcoming transition to the middle school. The kids, I think, feel prepared, relieved to have met them and there will be an event in the fall, end of the summer, um, where they get to go to Northwestern and get to see the building, connect with some of the eighth grade leaders and so that was, um, nice that we were able to do that in person instead of virtual. Tomorrow, we're finishing up the Smarter Balance assessments. Mr. Snyder, uh, created a Botel version of the Geography Bee because it was canceled this year and, um, did an outstanding job. John Frisco was our school champion.
Everything to do with that.
And the sixth grade trip was fantastic, it was, you know, shorter than I think we all would have liked, but what a rich learning experience for our students, they got to, you know, we went on a, a lab boat, they got to do various shore expeditions and the, you know, in my, geez, is it thirty years now of being an educator, I have to say it was probably the best field trip educational experience I've ever participated in. The, the people who ran it not only were experts on the topic, but were experts at teaching children, it was fantastic. So, we would like to make sure that whatever the sixth grade trip looks like next year also includes Project Oceanology and, um, you know, that, it was outstanding. Um, upcoming events, we have our PTO talent show coming up, uh, this Friday. The art show, we're doing similar to our meet and greet at the beginning of the year. The art show is going to be open after school hours, um, and it's been split up by families' last name, so on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week, it's kind of a drop-in, um, by, you know, we arranged it so the numbers were evenly split among those three days and people will be able to see the art show and remain safe and socially distanced, masks will still have to be worn, but, um, we're excited that Ms. Baselman is, uh, able to do that. We're having a spring concert in the Covered Playground next Thursday, uh, at six o'clock. Field Day is the following day from nine to twelve, we're kicking off our summer reading program that afternoon in the Covered Playground. On the fourteenth, we're going to use the Covered Playground again for our first and last good news gathering of the year and, um, some of the sixth grade awards will also be handed out at that, um, assembly. Parents will be invited virtually to attend that.
What time, Lauren?
That's still to be determined.
Okay.
We're also going to have, um, the band and chorus participate in that because we're not having a daytime concert, so we're going to have an abridged spring concert at that, um, assembly, so all of the students will get to see the, um, musicians.
Lauren, are there any plans to record that or could we record that and?
Sure.
That'd be good. I don't know if anyone, well, I know John watched the Facebook or tried to watch the, oh no, you didn't get into the Facebook Live.
Did you watch the Facebook Live?
Yeah, well, because people were texting me like, John's doing so well and I usually doesn't participate, so I went on Facebook Live.
How did it work? It seemed glitchy here, how did it feel when you were watching it?
Um, there was a little lag and even watching the recording, you could see that there was a lag when it was getting recorded.
Oh, okay.
Like the wifi maybe wasn't strong enough.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, I mean, we heard everything, so.
Oh, very good.
We could hear all the participants and it was, that was fun.
We did hear that, John, I did it right. I'll work myself. Well, actually, I called him, so.
And whoever was typing in the comments, like in the Facebook Live, like with the answers, that was awesome, because that was, that was fun.
I asked her, I'm like, why are you doing everything all in caps? It's so weird, it's like, she's like, I can't manage the uppercase lowercase. Doesn't really make sense.
Well, it looked official, so.
I don't know how the wifi will be in the Covered Playground, but we can certainly give it a go.
We could maybe, maybe we'll just record it and then post it in the afterwards or something like that, but.
Yeah.
I, I would love to keep trying to record each of our events so we can kind of build our library of events.
Definitely.
Some cool stuff you do.
Um, the sixth grade promotion is scheduled for six on the fourteenth and then we have the last day of school, it's hard to believe it's two weeks away. One PM dismissal.
Where is the promotion going to be, in the Hall of Flags or the Covered Playground?
I thought we were having it in the gym.
The gym, I mean, that's what I meant.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
I just didn't know if you, we're using the Collier.
Yeah.
Using the Covered Playground a lot, but. I wasn't sure if you wanted to.
I don't know, are there, I guess we could if we wanted to.
Are there restrictions to who can go to the, um, promotion?
Meaning numbers of people or just attendees in general?
Um, numbers of people or.
So, I, we, I, I put an email out to the sixth grade parents to just kind of get a feel for how many people would you invite if you could invite as many people in your family as possible. We can fit everybody, that, based on the responses that I've gotten from families, the most I think is sixteen people and the fewest is three, so I thought the plan would be to arrange them in little family groups and then socially distance the family groups and label them like we're labeled here, this is where you're sitting and that way we should be able to fit everybody that we need to, you know.
It's kind of fun to put a little table.
Yeah. Right, just like the, the Emmys or whatever. The Oscars.
The moving around tables and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm curious, is the sixteen people for two students?
No.
Or it's for one?
Yes.
Wow, that's a lot.
That's a big family.
Big family, yes.
And so if you're the public, like what if, can people come off the, like, if you're not there?
I know, I, I guess that's up to the board, I didn't, you know, we didn't get that far yet, um, I know that there's a former teacher who has requested to come and she called and I said sure, um, but as far as opening it up to the public, we typically don't get a lot of public other than, um, you know, family members of the sixth grade and staff members.
And we'll have a board section, so board members will come, will have their spot to the cohort.
Just thinking about the table setting, I would like for the board members.
Pizza.
Well, we have, we have a budget for, like, since people have to wear masks and stuff, but we can get like flowers or like something for the tables.
We don't have the tables, I was just kidding.
The problem with the tables, people would have their back to the stage.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have, you know, it might be difficult.
Yeah, I don't know, anyway.
It's not that long.
So, yeah. Okay.
And then, so these are the numbers of students at the end of this year, do we have numbers for what we're anticipating for the beginning of next year?
Well, I could get those, but I don't have them like this.
In, in, you know, ballpark figures, so we now are up to three preschoolers, so if next year we have three kids coming into preschool and we will lose our eleven sixth graders, so that would be a net loss of eight and if you take, and if, and then you take the two Colebrook, no, because one of those Colebrook students, oh, she, no, that Colebrook student is staying, so we, we, we won't even deal with that, so. Seventy-four minus eight is sixty-six. I believe, do, we, do we know of any of our, the New York or California or COVID people who are here now that have said that they're going to leave, Lauren?
They have not let me know yet.
Okay, so there's likely that will, there'll be some loss there. Um, and you just never know who might move in, but I would say probably mid-sixties is a safe number to count on.
Okay.
And that can fluctuate from where the transit, you know, the transactions now in the real estate.
Yeah, it seems clear though that, you know, when we come back to the, to the table next, at our next meeting, we'll really have to focus on what our, you know, on our student population, you know, things that we might be able to do, you know, what, what things look like going forward and, you know, how we can keep, um, you know, making our school the best it can be and see what we can do to attract new students.
I know they're saying, are, now, I didn't get a chance to read it yet, with the new housing, how many units do they expect in there?
Well, so that meeting is about to start in about ten minutes, so.
Yeah, I was supposed to.
Yeah, so, um, I think I'm gonna try to record it.
Seventeen.
I think.
Yeah, so the first phase is ten, right?
Yeah.
So they, so they were trying to get a larger number, but then decided to scale back is what, what we.
To ten, yeah.
Say, to ten.
Okay.
So now it's back to ten, you're saying? Ten units, right.
But Sally, I think, you know, in terms of attracting people to Botel, would be a really nice time for you to share the little conversation that you had with a family.
Oh, I, I did, and this just happened over the, uh, the weekend. Often being approached as a, a board member, um, often there are, um, you know, people have a complaint about something or a negative comment or something and this weekend, uh, or last weekend rather, um, I was approached by a woman and actually she didn't approach me initially about Botel School, she approached me, uh, she said, oh, you're Larry Hannafin's wife, I'd like to meet you, your husband was very kind and did, uh, something very kind for me and I said, oh, well, that's nice, so forth. And we got talking and where does she live, how, how is she in Norfolk or in the nearby area? And she was from California, they're redoing a house here, but during the pandemic, her grandchild came to Botel School, he's at a very, uh, high-end private school on the West Coast. I can't remember, San Diego or, or if it was. And, um, she said, I cannot express to you what a good job Botel School is doing. With the curriculum, with the staff, I was impressed, now this woman's background was education, which I didn't know was such a thing, and she's some kind of a curriculum expert, uh, whatever. She said, I was so pleased, I can't tell you. And I took, that is a great comment for Botel for, for the thing. The other thing that happened was, uh, supporting the, um, school trip and so forth, I bought a number of gifts for people, sweatshirts or T-shirts or, you know, whatever. And commented back, the quality was outstanding.
Sure that did jerk me out?
It's the same word they said about what was happening at Botel School. It was outstanding.
A quality place for our sweatshirts to our curriculum.
That's great.
For the curriculum, so.
So, yeah, I think it's.
I, I really enjoyed my weekend.
Our realtors need to hear these things, like they could.
Keep building themselves.
Families, I'm sorry, I'm texting Matt Riska on those others at meeting, because.
Yeah, so I think that's the thing, we have to get people to move to the town so they can come to the school.
Absolutely.
That's what we need to do, because our school is doing great, so we just, we get people to move in here. Okay, so that affordable housing, um, meeting is a very important one, so I want to see, let's see.
At what is that, did you say?
It's at seven o'clock.
Yeah, Matt let me in, so we've got seven minutes.
Okay, alright, let's see how, how we go, so we're through a lot of things here, that's my little sheet. Um, we're gonna move on to our committees now, right? Yeah, committees, seems to me, policy is the one committee that I know of.
Yes, I am, we met last week and we have a number of little reading homework assignments to do over the summer, uh, various, um, policies we might revisit come the fall, um, but there was one that we're, I'm gonna pass out tonight as a first read regarding the, um, tuition fees for, um, non-resident students that are, um, staff members, children of staff.
Oh, great.
To, um, handle that entail. Of course, thank you.
I think it would be good to tuck these right into the book that you're going to be reading this summer.
We do have a tuition policy and so the language at the end of that is just to consider a revision rather than a whole new policy.
And it specifically just pertains to staff.
Staff members.
Yeah. As an ad is.
Okay. Okay, so we should read this over and discuss it at our next meeting?
Yes.
Why? Okay, great. And was that, was that all?
That's all.
Okay, alright, um, moving down to shared services, Gordon, was there anything you wanted to share from that meeting?
Yeah, it's just, you know, I'm, I come out of those meetings just blown away by the incredible efficiency of, of Quentin and his team, it's just like, you, you, I, you guys, I don't know if you understand what an incredible mess running something like this could potentially be and I, I'm stunned by the, literally, the only thing I can think of to describe it based on his, his reports is a, is a well-oiled machine, I mean, that thing just keeps going and he says, well, we're just starting along, had a really good year and we, they were able to, um, they did have a lot of para-professional turnover, but the, um, the, the directory staff or the, the more, the certified staff, anyone who left was replaced. anyone who left was replaced by someone who was more qualified or even better at their job. And the money is fine and the enrollment is good and the, you know, they've saved some money this year, which they're able to use in kind of wonderful ways. And what he's really proud about, he was, of course, this was his report because we had to go into executive session and vote about him. He was bringing up his goals and showing us how he met them. And boy, just like, well, there was, this was never in doubt, but really, how can you possibly be this good at what you do? So he just, you know, he's, they managed throughout the pandemic year to sustain the Bridges Program and to offer a number of in-person activities for, for kids who are receiving services. And just altogether, a remarkable report, just, they're so good. If you guys have any questions, I would love to answer them. I do have some, a brochure that I was given when I joined that covers a lot of the, of the, of the services that they provide to the region. Spectacular, just never, and it, and it's much more long, far-reaching than just the, you know, the five school districts that they serve because ultimately the things that they do for these kids has, has long-term, consistent community effects that supports the communities surrounding them. And just, it's amazing.
That's wonderful.
It is wonderful. He's, he's incredible.
We did vote to keep him on.
Good. I'm really relieved to hear that.
Okay, for the, for the PTO, as Lauren said, Talent Show Friday is at 6:30. It's going to be held outdoors down here. We're going to perform it outside in front of the Hall of, Hall of Flags doors. It's going to be a little different than years past, but, you know, come by, bring a chair and that'd be nice. Also, keep an eye out for over the summer, we are hoping to host an event during Wind Weekend in the Garden. Or the Garden is a big push for the PTO this year and we want to show it off. Okay, from the Board of Finance?
We've not met, but since we last met as our board, the town approved the town budget with our budget in it and the regional seven budget, so.
All booked.
All booked.
Great, great. So, um, oh, did the bag committee have any, did they, have you guys met and anything you wanted to mention there?
We have not met, but I guess following up on the, what the number's going to be like next year, I think that we need to meet, but, but we should also probably, if, if anybody has any ideas or comments or thoughts about what we can do, just let us know.
Well, I attended the EDC meeting, which Libby is the chair of, and just to get a feel of how they're sort of also helping with, you know, real estate sales and trying to, you know, get families to move here. You know, there's a lot of, I mean, houses are selling and turning over, but a lot of the people buying don't have, aren't planning on sending their children to the public school here. It's either their second home or things like that. So we're just trying to think of ways to.
I have a project I would love to talk with the EDC about, which is funding the repair of the green, the big green slide. That big green slide repair is kind of more and more complicated. It's going to now require an entire new base because everything's been messed up with it. And it's pricey, it's a big price tag and I would love to find some sort of, you know, benefactor who would be interested in helping with that.
What is the price that they're, I mean.
I have to check.
Can they give us an idea of the cost?
It's like $40,000, I think.
Oh, wow, wow, we need a major campaign.
I thought it was under, I really had this impression that it was something that we were, that it was, was already in the works.
Yes, well, that's what, so it was in the works to fix the pieces and that was all going to be, that was all going to work. Then the pieces couldn't come because of COVID shipping delays. Then the vandal, I don't know if it was additional van vandalism or if it was just time passage, but now the wood pieces that hold up the slide are all messed up.
They're rotten, they're totally rotten, yeah.
Broken, so now it all has to be replaced. So now it's in terror, like it's in bad shape. And I, and I honestly, I thought that the town was making, was moving forward on it, but I talked with Matt today and it's not going to, they're not going to be able to do that, so he said.
Also, with the lumber prices, they're.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, and steel, I mean, all of it, any material right now is.
But I do think that that green slide, as I said to Matt, when you Google Norfolk, Connecticut, the big green slide of Botel School is what comes up like, it's pretty tight.
Right, right, so many families use it. I mean, whether they live there part-time or full-time or.
It is a destination for people.
How can we market that as a campaign and can we offer them a donation, the 501?
Heck, yeah, we could totally do that work.
We, we could do some of our own marketing regarding that.
Send out some digital one.
And we must all have friends there, right? That we can approach and have a real campaign to do that. I mean, it's worth, but we, I think that's the only way and that's a lot of money.
That might be a good thing for us to do as, with a collaboration with other boards and that sort of thing to kind of pull, pull all of our resources together.
Together.
I, it's 7:00, so, but I had forgotten, we need to go into an executive session today. So to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. So I would like us to make a motion to, I forget exactly how it's supposed to go. We make a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah.
Right, okay, and then we.
And move into the executive session.
Second.
Okay.
And Jill, will you know when you come out and, and show the meeting for Kathy?
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. So if you're going to stick around, you're going to go.
You want me to?
No, that's. If you want me to, I will.
No, it's time to turn this off.
Lauren and Mary Beth, we just wanted to, I just wanted to let you guys know that the grant request for the, for the, for the sensory room was approved.
Oh, good. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's huge, thank you so much. Sorry, it wasn't the slide. Didn't know, I was like, I had somebody saying, well, what, shouldn't that money go to fix the slide? And I said, the slides be you taking care of. And so when I hear this, I, I'm, I'm just, sorry, didn't know.